That's a pretty bad accusation to make. I'm in charge of hiring. I'm a police officer. So, you know, you guys recommend what you want and I'm all for whatever you recommend. But I just don't understand where the hatred comes for, for your own police department. We can do things better. We can. I'm trying. But that meeting last week was nothing less than awful, in my opinion, the last part of it. You're comparing us to people who murdered 10 million people of the Jewish faith. I don't even know what to say to that, or why, or if you even want us here anymore. And you don't have to answer today. No, you don't have to answer at all. It's just, it was hard to watch. And I feel that I can come here and talk to you guys about my feelings, because I feel this is a safe space and that you guys have made it that way for me. And I've tried to make it that way for you. And I've tried to answer all the questions. But if there's such a hatred for us, Beaverton Police, I'm not talking about nationally. There are some messed up things that go on out there for police. Police officers do some messed up things. So do doctors. So do lawyers. You know, I just don't know how to, that's not even defend. I don't even know how to sit through meetings like that and, and come away with thinking, I don't even want to be a police officer anymore. And maybe that's the goal of some people in the committee, is to make police officers who take the oath and the honor of preserving and protecting human life and do good things every day to make them hate themselves or not want to do their job. That's fine. But, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say my piece and, and I thought a lot about this since Monday. And I'm gonna leave the meeting and please go forward. And I don't want to put a damper on anything, but that's where I'm at. And you guys can reach out to Paulo if you choose, or if you don't, that's fine. But I just, it's disheartening. I came with an open mind and I'll fix whatever things you bring to me that are specific to Beaverton. I'll do my best. But I just felt a lot of hate at that last meeting. And I think it, it just wasn't productive. It's not productive for me. It's not productive for Lieutenant Stallingworth or Captain Wondell or any other officer to have to sit through that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign off now and, and thank you for letting me join in. And thank you for welcoming me to these meetings. I really, really, truly have enjoyed my time with you guys. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chief, for showing. I'm gonna reach out. I think I have your contact information, but I'm gonna get in touch with you in the next couple of days, because I just want to talk more offline a little bit.
Okay.
Let's connect. You'll hear from me. And if you don't, I'll tell, I'll poke Paulo.
Okay. All right. Thanks, you guys. Have a good rest of your day.
Um, there was one person asking if, oh, well, she's gone.
That's okay.
Sorry, Kevin.
I think Neil had something he wanted to say.
Oh.
Officer Sean, did you have something you wanted to say? Did you unmute it? Oh. Paul, I think you have to adjust it so that he can be heard.
You're a panelist and it says you're unmuted. Here, I'm gonna mute you and then unmute you. And then, let's see. Okay, I just said ask to unmute, so hopefully it gives you that option. Okay?
Check your microphone.
Yeah, it might be the microphone settings. Do you want to give me a call, Lieutenant? Maybe I can put it on speakerphone? I think I'm calling you. No? Interesting. Okay. Go ahead.
It's gonna have reverb.
Got it. Um, I think we'll go ahead and we'll just wait for folks to reach out offline. And that'll be fine. All right. Thank you, then. Okay, he was just letting me know that the chief is right next to him. Do we want to do this kind of, you know, talking through the mic thing? It's looking like we'll go ahead and just move on. All good, Lieutenant? Okay. Cool. Just before we go ahead and get started, we don't have quorum. We have, according to the invite, we had enough. I just texted Kathy. And Lisa let me know that she can't make it. So, yeah, I just texted Kathy. I'll go ahead and put myself on mute and stop my video. If y'all want to go ahead and start talking, and I'll try to listen to both. And I'll give Kathy a call, so we can jump in.
Okay, thanks, Paulo. Um, Dory, do you mind leading us off with kind of purpose for today?
Yes, let me write down the time. So the purpose today was to finalize the recommendations that will be presented to the City Council on the 26th of this month. And according to our calendar, we were gonna finish this in December. So we're a little run over. And so the last three things that we were talking about at the end of last meeting that we got rushed were SROs, community engagement, and A can't wait. We got through A can't wait and SROs, but I think that Spencer had more to say about that. And then we were just starting community engagement when, I think it was Dory observed, I think we're rushing, so we stopped. And I'm wondering if Dory, since you're feeling better and you're back in the document, what I also wanted to explain, the way I put this document together, when I took this class in getting ready for law school, there are no judges that'll read 22 pages. If you can't make it in one page, you don't know it well enough. So what I did is behind the title page, I put a short synopsis with no comments of what our recommendations were. Then the table of contents. And then behind the table of contents, all of the stuff. Dory was right. It's good to include all of the things we talked about and went through and tried to discuss and tried to come to consensus on. So that's why everything is included behind the table of contents. So that's where we left off.
Point of information, I guess. Just because I know that sometimes I can misspeak and get passionate. I want to make sure that, does anyone recall me in the last meeting going beyond what my normal comments are and actually making like a Nazi comparison? Because if I did, I'll need to apologize immediately.
That was me. I went through and I apologize. I don't mean actually Nazis. I'm sensitive. Having survived a Nazi, an actual card carrying Nazi that I was married to, I'm watching the insurrection on the United States Capitol and the Confederate flag flying in the Capitol.
Okay. No, I just want to make sure that I didn't somehow.
No, that was me.
Far beyond the, yeah. I wanted to make sure it wasn't me. That went beyond the bounds.
Yeah, that was, I apologize. And what I apologize for is, well, I don't want to offend anyone. I really don't. And I don't want to hurt anyone. And when I say Nazi, I don't necessarily mean like my ex-husband with a card carrying Nazi SS uniform kind of thing. The challenge is that if you list all of the characteristics of Nazi, it's the same thing. It's just saying it.
Yeah, Dory, I would, I would stop there before.
Yeah.
So, if I may, just ask us to take a minute as humans. Just quiet our bodies, quiet ourselves. And take some breaths. Because there is an injury spoken from the chief, who said that, for the folks that are just arriving, that chief was really personally impacted, she said, by being thought of as a Nazi. And I can tell Lieutenant Stallingworth was as well. So let's just take some breaths, consider the impact of that. And then say if you would like to talk to them offline, Paulo is our resource for doing that. And I got sick last week and I'm gonna say mercy, I was planning to give you a call too and did not get a chance to give you a call. Or Lieutenant Stallingworth, because I felt that he deserved a call as well, because I saw the expression on his face during the end of the meeting. And so I will take care of that mercy. You and I can talk offline about when we can talk. And then I will also reach out to Lieutenant Stallingworth, as I had planned. But each of us has to choose in our own way how we are going to make repair. Right? If we think that we need to make repair, that's one thing. If you feel like you need to reach out, please do so through Paulo. So what I'd like is, may I do this one, one more thing, Laurel? I want us to just close our eyes for a minute and visualize the unimaginable, right? When we think of community safety in Beaverton, what do you see? What do you see when you walk around the streets? What do you see when you're standing in the park? What do you see when you see a group of people in the community who are protesting? What do you see when you see somebody in mental health crisis? What is the help that that person is being provided look like? Sit in those pieces that you're visualizing. And now if you could bring them to us, because they will help us in the work that we're about to do. So when you're ready, open your eyes. Take a deep breath in, let it all out. And I turn it over to Laurel and Joy, who will lead us forward.
That was perfect. Thank you so much, Dory. You needed that. Um, I'm rechecking our, I wanted to make sure, it looks like we're all looking at the same document now. I wanted to ask if people want me to screen share that. Will that be helpful or will that make it?
Go ahead. As the typist, can I screen share?
Yes, yes. Let's do that. Okay.
Jump that I have up here, but here we go.
That's fine. I just, this is, I, in coming to this meeting, I was, I, I had a moment where I was explaining to the other people I was meeting with while I was leaving early. And I was like, yeah, we're gonna go try to wrap up six months of work in an hour. Wish me luck. And when I looked at this document, especially enjoy the way you rearranged it with that like crazy at the beginning, I was like, oh, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess like we could wrap up six months of work in an hour. That's awesome. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who's, who's gotten us to this point. Pretty fantastic. Um, I'm gonna do very little talking and I want to actually turn it over to Joy, because I feel like you, I feel like you're gonna lead this better than I am. So I'm just gonna be here as the like, I don't know, almost like the referee, maybe?
Okay.
Before it, Joy.
All right. Well, I know from my conversation earlier today with Spencer, he had something to say about SROs. So they're first on the list. We can start with Spencer, what you have to say.
Thanks. Can I just say real quick, again, just, I don't know if this was mentioned when I was on the phone earlier, so sorry, just the goals of this meeting here. Was that already talked about? I don't.
To wrap us up and get it ready for the 26th.
And I have it approved. Yes.
Yeah.
Please go on.
Okay. And SROs, which was in the final recommendation page, which is page one, that would be item five.
Sorry, give me just a second.
Let's go to the very top of the document.
Yeah. Right, but did, okay, as you wish.
So, SROs, we voted at the end, after all the conversations and leading the discussion, well, I, I had part of the discussion. We've talked this off and on the entire time. It keeps coming up. And it was resolved to remove SROs from the schools would be our recommendation. And so Spencer.
Thanks. I don't know what are, what the proper thing to do is here. I would have said far, far more last week if we had just been by ourselves. I was self-conscious with people who weren't on the commission being in the meeting. Commissioner and Lieutenant Stollingsworth and, you know, whoever else was there. So one question I have is, is it possible to have commission only meetings? And that's a conversation we can have some other time. I find myself wondering if I missed the meeting where all the data in opposition to SRO programs was presented. I'm used to seeing research that's done by civic organizations or by a civic organization with which I've worked. Interview people. And listen to experiences and listen to data and information. And I've never heard from anyone outside the commission about SROs. I feel as though members of the commission have come to this process with their minds made up about SROs. As I explained last week, I've never had a student in, in the Beaverton schools. And when my kids were growing up in Seattle, I guess there were SROs in the high schools, but I was never really aware of it. Anyway, I've got a friend, forgive me for, I'm gonna fumble this a bit. I've got a friend who works in administration in a high school in Beaverton. And so because I don't know anything about the program, I asked them what their experience has been with SROs. And I'd like to read a bit of what they wrote to me. I've had the privilege of working with three different SROs during my years working in the high school. My job puts me on the front line, literally and figuratively. I've seen just about everything you can imagine come through the front door. Suicide attempts, fights, drug alcohol use, runaways, abuse victims, out of control parents, and more. There have also been a few times when I've been a little too close and have felt personally unsafe. Each and every time we've needed the help of the SRO, they've been there to help. Never seen them act with anything other than professionalism and compassion. I don't believe our SROs are in the business of supplying the pipeline. In fact, I believe the opposite is true. Sure, there are times when arrests need to be made, but only if there are no other options. And certainly with no bias. I've witnessed our, I've witnessed our officers develop positive relationships with our students. And I believe they've made a difference for many of them in terms of the choices they make. As part of the counseling team, I've also witnessed our SROs working closely with counselors and administrators to help students that may be in danger, either at home or at school. So I've been finding myself wondering if the school district indeed, or if the city indeed accepts our recommendation to do away with that program, how many high school students won't be protected from abusive parents? Or how many high school, how many students won't have the benefit of an intervention? If they're contemplating harming themselves? I just, I haven't heard from anyone outside this commission what's wrong with SROs. I've never talked to, no, no one has come to the commission to be a witness. And in the absence of witnesses with experience, I'm concerned that we're not actually in a position to judge. I'm certainly not, which is why I didn't vote for the, for the recommendation. And it might well be too late to revisit it. But I question the accuracy of our judgment. And whether it's truly the the right thing to do for the benefit of our community. Thank you.
And.
Uh, sorry.
I think our chair and vice chair would be the ones to address this since they're teachers.
And I don't, hold on.
And I see, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a list of whose hands I see up in the chat, too. Go ahead, Dory.
And so I want to respond directly, Spencer, and thank you for raising that. Both points, right? The point about when do we go into session with just us? So people can be comfortable having a back and forth discussion. I've reflected a lot about last week and some of the things that happened. For example, we have brand new people who are diving in. Their first day, they're looking at these, they're thinking they can make all kinds of changes. We're not at a point, and, and we should have said, we're not at a point where we're gonna make 100 changes, right? We're at a point where we're finishing up. We are wrapping up this word. The SRO piece. There is a lot of research that shows that SROs negatively impact the experiences of children of color. Right? So there's also research that shows that other positions within a school can be more supportive, right? So for example, there are security people at each school. Research has shown that those folks that are security people that are there every day, that are there for lunch, kids in the morning that have more time to build a relationship, tend to be the ones that kids will go to when they have problems. And we're also not imagining what could be, right? So Spencer, I'm gonna tell you where this comes from for me. And I have been in shooter situations in various schools. And yes, police were very helpful, but they were called to the site. We had a school SRO. We didn't have a relationship with that person, nor did our children have a relationship with that person. When those children were dealing with the post-traumatic stress of having been shot at, they went to their teachers. So they didn't necessarily go to the SROs. And the question becomes, what is it that we can imagine that the money from the SROs, which is a substantial amount of money, what could that money be used for, right? So there's two parts, the SRO program in Beaverton. One part is what the city pays to sheriffs and the BPD for SROs. And one part is what the school district pays to invest in those SROs. So with that, I'm sorry, Laurel, you can go ahead and call on other folks.
No, thank you, Dory. That was awesome. Sabby, go ahead and then I'm gonna jump in.
Hi there. So, I mean, I'm gonna basically echo what Dory was kind of going down and training on. So I, from here, you know, I definitely went to high school with SROs. And as a student, I could say I remember my experience being up there with Dory. You know, the, the relationship isn't there. The relationship that we have with our security officers, that's kind of who we went to. That's who we saw on a day-to-day basis. And we didn't have a relationship with the SROs. I can kind of see why there's this argument that we're questioning their effectiveness. Also, I would say everything that you just wrote off on the statement that was given to you by your friend or colleague, it plays right into what we're talking about when it comes to policing the community. You know, if we're talking about mental health issues, if we're talking about suicide attempts, if we're talking about issues at home, like there are other resources that we can tap into and should be tapping into that isn't the police officer or in a school's case, the SRO, to handle those things. You know what I mean? But I feel like the same argument could be made, which is why we're talking about reallocating those resources to other ways to help our schools and our teachers and our students. How about it?
Thanks, Sabby. Um, I want to echo and star and emphasize everything that both Dory and Sabby said. And, um, sorry, my mom is. And I also, I, Spencer, I wanted to give you a couple of just things to ponder. Like, not rebuttals, not, you know, I don't, that's not how I, I don't, I actually, my brain just doesn't function that way. But two things that I thought while I was listening to what you were saying and that I wanted you to think about. The question I always ask people is what evidence do we have that SROs are doing good? That often that we, we present it as a done deal, that like, we have to provide evidence for why we should change course. And I would say instead, what evidence do we have that compels us to have armed officers in schools? And when I started looking at it that way, I had a very different, I had a dramatic change in my thoughts of SROs. When I started looking for what evidence can I find that this is a good thing, that I should opt in for, for my community? So that's my one question that I want you to ponder. And then the other thing that I just wanted to really emphasize is that there are a lot of opportunities for school leadership, adults, administrators, teachers, but only if they're white teachers, to provide their thoughts on SROs. The limited opportunities that we give to students and to families tend to not have, first of all, are very limited, right? So Spencer, as you're kind of reaching out and finding people to talk to about SROs, that's who I would focus your, your kind of questioning on is what, what opportunities do you have to connect with students? And with, especially students of color and families of color to get their take on SROs? And that was part of what you said, right? That like you're, you don't have kids currently in the school district. I don't either, I don't get to see the kids in the school district as often as I would like right now. But that's, so that, and that really, and I would put that out not just for Spencer, but for anybody. And as you're looking for ways to think about SROs, those are the two things that I always tell people to think about. Like, what evidence do we have that SROs are good? And what do students have to say? So those are mine. And then let's go to Stephanie.
Hi. Yeah, I, I wanted to add a little bit more to the discussion about SROs. One is that I, I fully accept and recognize that the experience of people of color with SROs would be dramatically different. And I don't pretend to understand or even try to, try, try to pretend that I have context to understand that and that my position is, is simply to, to listen and learn about that. I'm also fully aware. I'm also fully aware that the school districts and the vast majority of parents who granted probably are white parents have been supportive of SROs in the school. And my concern is that SROs will probably not be removed from the schools because of our recommendation. But I do have concerns that we're by having the flat recommendation that SROs be removed from schools, we've lost the opportunity to make suggestions about how SROs could be beneficial reform or, or approach the situation differently. Or we could imagine them in this, the school district differently. Or we could imagine them developing relationship or make recommendations in that respect. We're, we're cutting ourselves off completely from any input into something that will probably remain in the school. Because again, the, I, I work on the school curriculum team for the city of Beaverton. My understanding from, from them and from the school board as well as our city council and from the police department is, I mean, they think they're doing great. They think they're doing something really beneficial and all of those other entities are in relative agreement with that. And if, if we're just saying they should be gone, I wonder if we're missing our opportunity to influence. If they are going to be there, what, what kind of capacity that they would be serving in? Similarly, you know, it was, I, I honestly, I was very devastated by our, our last meeting. So when Chief Groschon expressed that, I, I, I almost felt relieved that she said those things because I was, I too was so devastated after that meeting. I, I thought I, I clearly don't belong on this commission. And I, I don't, I don't believe that I have anything to contribute any longer. Really with the direction that it was going at our last meeting. But, um, but here I am, and I, I thought, well, as, as long as I'm in this final year, I'll, I'll put in my two cents. And I think we need to be careful as we're eliminating recommendations that we aren't eliminating our voice to imagine something new, imagine a new kind of policing and imagine a new kind of interaction. And I'm not, I'm not sure that we're, we're heading in that direction with, with some of what we're doing and some of what we're cutting out. I think we're, we're just cutting out whole aspects of, of our, our voice and of the opportunity to influence and imagine something new.
That's a really good, thank you, Stephanie, for that. And that, and I would sum that up as like, almost are we that kind of, we need to tread carefully on when will we be writing ourselves out of the conversation? Right? And that's, and, and I don't mean like you individually, because I don't want you to write yourself out of the conversation, but like we as ETR. And I think that's a really solid, I think that's a really solid question. Let's, Dory, go ahead.
Can I leap in here? Because I think there's room and that's what we're attempting to create in the document. Was room for everybody's opinion to be heard, right? As well as coming up with final recommendations. So and this is what I would suggest as we're also at 3:40, which gives us 20 minutes to talk about everything. And Spencer, you have some strong opinions about where the commission stood and how we felt, right? I think if you can write that up, and Paula, you can tell me if this is okay. We could put that in the comments section that is much longer, right? So we could include that in the comments and I'm gonna respectfully disagree. I don't know about you all, but I know for me, I read every sentence of a document that's sent to me when I'm asked to make a decision on it. And that could just be how I operate, but that's how I operate. And, and my impression of our counselors is that they do the same thing. They're really, they do really read every word. So that would be my suggestion for Spencer. Stephanie, you know, that's how it was written before, right? We were leaving space for the discussion around SROs. And we were trying to cultivate that discussion. Once again, I'm going to say we have people who are new coming in who had very strong opinions and folks who have strong opinions saying, this is where we want to go. So this is what we voted. So I think we have to leave it in there. Am I correct, everybody? What I think about?
We have a forum. We can make a new motion.
Yep.
We have a forum.
Wait, let Dory, let's Dory finish your thought.
And, but I would say, you know, my suggestion would be to respect everybody who was with us on Wednesday and everybody who is not here now to leave this and then to also add to the comments, the other potential ideas, right? It's not saying that that's a proposal, but here are the comments of other ways to go so that you're giving them room to do what they might need to do.
So do we want to say that we didn't come to a consensus on SROs in our recommendations? And see the comments?
I think Cameron had something he wanted to add. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we vote, so saying we didn't come to a consensus doesn't really work. So I would propose that we keep the recommendation of eliminating for SRs, but then offer in the alternative doing a study or basically taking the comments that we've already had and offering that. So basically we do, we do one, so recommendation one. But recommendation two in the alternative is this. I think that would take into account most of the problems that we're having. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe part of it is the study which would take into Spencer's account or Spencer's concerns.
Dory, can you scroll just so that on your screen, can you scroll so those other, those like alternative SR recommendations are up? Sorry, go ahead, Cameron.
Page seventeen.
And it's still going to be there, Joy, because I just cut it, I cut and pasted into the original document. I haven't, I didn't realize that you had made all those changes.
Okay. Well, I didn't change anything that was put together before. I just added the pages on. That's why I'm honest.
Then we're good. So I was going to get through and go through and do the comparison.
Every word was in there. I didn't take anything out.
Actually, since we have quorum, I'm actually just going to go ahead and motion for that.
Oh. Motion.
We add, that we add.
Section five back?
Well, that we add. We add, let's see how, we add as recommendation two under our recommendations for SRO programs in the alternative. Consider in the alternative, study the effectiveness of SRO programs in schools, in Beaverton schools.
So that was one of the, so sorry, why I was trying to see if we could get get that up on the screen is some of the.
Why, anyway. Is definitely.
Um, okay, so because there was.
Here it is, number E.
Yeah, I guess what I'm, so Cameron, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we don't. There we go. So we had, yes, we had had those, some of the original recommendations. And so maybe instead of adding a new one, would you be making a motion instead to restore one of the ones that we omitted? Does that make sense?
Here, let me go.
Just a second. So it isn't on there yet.
Let me double go.
And then, yeah.
Okay, so I would, so I would instead add to recommendation to engage in the following process of two A, B, two A, two B, two C, two D.
I didn't follow that.
Okay, engage in the following, I've got you, engage in the following process.
And then it would restore, so it would restore to all of these recommendations here, A through B, as an alternative to elimination of the SRO programs. SRO elimination of the program remains our number one recommendation, but in the alternative, consider these.
I second that motion. I don't know, am I allowed to second things I did?
Yeah. You didn't make it. So, yeah.
Right.
Can I jump in before I turn it over to Spencer, just a logistical thing? So, um, Dory, you haven't technically changed anything on the doc yet, right?
No, what I did was I cut and pasted Joy's first two pages, the table of contents and her summary page. That's what I cut.
And then Joy, I, my understanding is from that Google doc, or from that document, you also changed formatting throughout the document?
I just cleaned it up.
Okay.
I didn't move anything. I didn't take out a dot. I just formatted.
Okay, so, okay, I'm going to start over here. Maybe if y'all want, since I have that document, what if we do this? What if I share screen instead, since no additions have been actually made?
Make additions, though. She added one 621 conversation to her document.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, no, I'm just making sure that, you know, when I see these, all those cleanups and everything that you did before Joy, it sounds like they wouldn't be included then. Because there were some formatting edits you did as well, right?
I would do it again. It's fine.
Okay, okay, I'm good. I'll stop. Thank you. Spencer?
Are we ready to vote?
Yes, there's been a second. I think we are. Joy, did you want to call for a vote?
Okay, let's, the question, we'll call the question is to vote on the motion to if and then our previous. No, there's been a motion to add.
To restore, to restore.
Sure.
To restore is to say this is our first recommendation, but if you're keeping an SRO, then this is what we would recommend for an SRO.
Yeah, definitely in favor of my emotion.
Spencer, I believe that that's a hand for a question and not a hand for.
No, we're voting.
He's voting. Spencer, are you voting? Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So one more time, I'm sorry, so I can capture the language. I'm not going to take the time to type it into the doc, but I am writing it down. And then I will type it into the doc. So Cameron, your language that I have, it reads, if recommendation one is not undertaken in the alternative, look at the processes A through E.
That is a sufficient explanation.
Okay.
Forgive me, I did have a question or a comment.
Okay.
I wasn't, I think what I was objecting, what I've been trying to object to as much as anything else is our process. As a commissioner, the fact is, is I simply don't know enough to make an informed decision about SROs. And that's what I probably should have tried to express more clearly. We actually haven't as a commission, researched the issue. I know that.
I mean, I have, but.
Exactly. You have. But there's been no evidence or report or data or, you know, information presented to the commission that informs a decision. As far as I can tell, I know that a, a number of people have informed themselves or have come into this whole process being informed. I am not. And if that's my fault, then I'll step up and say that's my fault. If there were opportunities during the last six months, if, if materials have been presented to us that I failed to read, then that's on me. And I apologize. But I just don't remember that happening. So.
So Spencer?
Spencer.
Do we want to make note of that? So for me, it's important, once again, trying to capture everybody's thoughts. Do we want to make note of that in this document somewhere? Spencer, do you want me to write that? So far, this is what I have. No evidence or reports of data that informs the commission were reviewed.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure that that's true. I remember speaking to I don't, what's it?
But that's Spencer's.
Chair is that.
So my question is, is it, if it's Spencer's truth, does Spencer want it recorded? That's what I'm asking very directly. So Spencer, do you want that truth that you were speaking for yourself to be recorded?
Well, it's a, it's a, for me, it's a, it's, it's a process issue and I may have misunderstood. I think I clearly misunderstood how this whole process was going to work. And if we could put off our report for two months, I think it would be a bit, I think we could do a better job. But if we're committed, if we've been required to submit the report next week, then so be it. And we have to go forward. I totally accept that. The only research that I personally did was in learning about a community oversight. And how different departments around the country or how different communities around the country, country instituted, how it works, whether it's effective, what it takes to make it effective and so on.
Spencer, I really hate to be this person. We have seven minutes left in this meeting. I have to leave on time. So I, I think the answer, so the Dory's question was in order for you to have your voice represented, is there a change that you need us to make to this document?
I think having the language about doing research and review of the program. If it's going to continue, I think that.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. And then.
Mercy has.
Yeah, Paulo, the, the further study is one of those bullet points. It's, it's like, it's E. It's actually embedded in a few of them. And then I want to pull us back. So we have a vote on the floor that we haven't actually completed. So we had a motion, we had a second, we had a call for a vote. I don't think we've actually counted the votes. Do we want to pause that here for mercy and then wrap that vote up? Let's do that. So let's, let's put a pause on that. Mercy, go ahead and then we'll, we'll close out that vote.
Hey, thank you. Just going to be real quick. Before I say what I want to say, the war hatred that was measured when Chief was talking is very strong. If they want to understand the way I feel and why I speak the way I speak, I'm open to meet with them. That's what I can say about that. But on the ground of SRO, I personally have not made any contribution to that. Because I don't have any experience with it. And I don't know it because I don't have kids in school. But that does not mean that people have experience with it, that know why they want to eliminate them. That does not mean we can't extend to them. They have all right to break it up. So I think the whole thing about SRO, if somebody feel that issue go because of their experience, we need to listen to them. And that's how I want to understand.
Mercy, are we okay then for me to steer us back toward wrapping up this vote? Okay, so the motion is.
We're going for the question. We've had a discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
I'm raising our hand or we just saying yes favor?
I think we're raising our hands.
One, two. Joy, is your hand? No, no. Two, three, four. Oh, the cameras keep moving around. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, it's five.
And opposed? And opposed?
Can I vote on this?
You can.
Are you for or against? For or against?
Against.
One against.
So five, four, one against, and then I think that's one of.
Abstention.
One abstention.
Yeah.
I've seen.
Two abstentions?
Two abstain.
So I just want to read it back to make sure I have the language. If recommendation one is not taken in the alternative, if recommendation one is not taken, engage in the process outlined in A through E.
Right.
Perfect, okay.
So you're putting that in?
I will, but I'm not going to do it right now because we have three minutes.
Right, okay. We, uh, the next point was it can't wait, which we voted to adopt. I think we're done there unless there's discussion. We only have two minutes.
The only discussion point was if we wanted to just move it higher in the document.
Okay.
Which I, I don't know. Sure. I'm okay with it the way it is, if that allows us to move, continue to move forward.
Exactly.
And uh, community engagement. Do we want to recommend all that reaching out to the police, community engagement?
So just to recap, last time we struck that section. But if you read in the other sections, one of the things we recommend is um that the city councillors engage with the work that Ellen Wyoming Deloitte presented to them about having authentic conversation with the community. And I think we may have even said um the police department as well. So I think the, the point that I said, that I'm going to summarize, and we can see if this makes sense. Cameron and Auntabean, who is not here, so I am not speaking for her. I'm remembering what we all, what was written, said, and um they said that reaching out to communities of color who already are feeling marginalized and perhaps threatened by the police is not the best way to connect with communities of color to build authentic relationship. So that's why we struck that section. That was some of the, the thinking that helped us to strike that section. Spencer, I know you had voiced in that same, those same comments, then how are you supposed to reach out to communities of color? Did you want to talk a little bit more about that, Spencer? What you were thinking there?
I wish we could, um, or that, I, I wish that people smarter than I am, um, and more experienced had a solution. I just, I, I, I hate to see us um cutting off potential avenues of communication. It doesn't, um, I think Stephanie was earlier reflecting that if we just shut something down, then there's no opportunity to improve it.
So look at the language under final recommendation. So let's all just examine that and I'll read it out loud. Connecting with community members. Upon further reflection and discussion during the January 2021 ATRAC meeting, is it okay if I put ATRAC in there?
Yeah.
ATRAC meeting. And in light of the day's insurrection, I don't know if that was considered during the meeting, right? If that, you know, if you're considering one day, but that's my editorial comment. This section.
Take it out. We can take it out. Um, I'm not married to it. You have the permission to hate it.
This, I'll, I'll leave it in for now until folks decide. This section was voted removed by the commission. It is included here to reflect the commission's efforts to address the issue.
I think you're right, Dory, that all of this, we really worked on stuff and just because it's not reflected here doesn't mean we didn't spend considerable effort on trying to come to something.
What happened in part of that discussion was, was the questioning of even if police should be given the option of, of education, of um learning de-escalation task tactics, learning about implicit bias. If, if we should even provide resources or training to them in any form, which um I was, I was disturbed by. And um, I, I feel like if, at, at, at the very least, I want to make sure that, you know, in in those, that we're leaving those sections in, and I respect the commission's um decision that they're going to remove that, all of those recommendations for the police, but I, I think it should be noted that at least a couple of commissioners, my, myself at least, felt really strongly that connecting with the community, or at least making strides in that direction, as we reimagine what the police force will look like, and because that's, that's really what we're in the process of doing, is reimagining an entire societal shift that, that we that we honor that at least, you know, some of us are some, at least I feel, I should only speak for myself. That, that I feel strongly that there's, that that's a part of the process is that we, we have to provide options or avenues to explore for the police department to connect with community in a healthy way. And I, I understand that some, um, some commissioners believe that that's impossible for the police to connect in a healthy way. And I, I recognize and I honor that. I just, um, I don't believe that's true.
You disagree. Carry on. Thank you, Stephanie.
That's, that's, yeah, proper way to say that.
I think Laurel had to leave, or maybe she's.
Laurel had.
Cameron? I saw Cameron's hand up, Cameron. What did you want to add?
So because I was the one pushing to remove those largely, uh, I feel like I should want, so I would love to see, you know, the I would love to see the police communicate in a safe and effective way with community members. I believe that our, our police departments, the Beaverton Police Department in particular can. I believe in them. Uh, they seem frankly like good people. I just think it is remiss to not acknowledge that at the current moment, for, for many people, interacting with the police is dangerous in its, is inherently dangerous activity. Do I believe that many of our police officers here could do it safely? Yes. Do I believe that many of our community members here could do it safely? Yes. That was ju, that was the thrust behind my beyond, behind my move to remove those particular paragraphs. Now, if we've, if overall we feel that we should be more hopeful, I'm all for it. I am by nature cynical and pessimistic, so maybe, maybe that's just on me. But if we'd like to be more hopeful on, I would not be opposed, but.
Cameron, I really honor your perspective, and I, I, I want to emphasize that my response to that was actually not, not in reference to anything that you were saying. Again, my concern is that if we do not provide the police department with healthy ideas or avenues in order to connect with the community, we're losing our voice in that development, and I'm, I'm concerned that we're, we're cutting out our voice once again, because the police department isn't going away, um, at least this year. Um, so, so when, if we, if we can begin that process of reimagining them, but what, what their interaction would look like in a healthy way, I want to be a part of that beginning of that evolution, and where it lands, I, I don't know. I really, I don't know where the evolution of police ultimately lands in a healthy society. I, I don't pretend to imagine that, but but I doubt that cutting off conversation is, but, but please understand, Cameron, my, my reaction to this actually wasn't, wasn't in any way directed towards, um, your concerns, and I, I feel like you create a healthy counterbalance in a lot of ways.
Thank you.
Stephanie and Cameron, I have an idea, and I'd love everybody else's input as well. And but since the two of you are speaking, I, I would like to make a suggestion. If we praise this as upon further reflection discussion during the January, January 2021 ATRAC meeting, and take out that part about the insurrection, because that's not necessarily applicable to this situation, that might speak to where we weren't, as where some people were in, in their emotions on that day. This section was voted removed by the commission. We understand, and do we want to add, there's complexity in building authentic relationships with communities of color? And Ellen Wyoming Deloitte addressed that in her work, right? I don't know if everyone took a look at it, but she really addressed it.
I like it.
So I'm going to make that motion. I move that we strike and in light of the insurrection. And I'm going to do it on here, and I can always return it, so don't, don't get mad at me. Um, upon further reflection discussion during the January 2021 ATRAC meeting, this section was voted removed by the commission because of the complexity of creating authentic relationships.
Motion to amend?
Creating authentic relationships, and I might be spelling things wrong, and I'll go back and fix it. Relationship.
Folks see Dory's, um, what she's writing?
Yeah.
Are you, okay.
We're watching, yeah.
And we recommend referring to Ellen Wyoming Deloitte's work as a starting point.
I like that a lot.
For um examining how to build authentic relationships with communities of color.
Yes.
With community members of color. Sorry, wordsmithing.
How about the BIPOC community?
Or BIPOC? Then take out, it is included.
You could say our discussion is, our, our work, our, our.
Our original work?
Yeah.
Our draft work?
Our draft work.
Draft work is included.
Included here.
In this, in this document?
Yeah.
Cool. Then I can point out the page.
Yeah.
This is the page number.
Depends on how it formats at the end. It was 17.
So I'm just going to do a quick formatting thing. That's my motion. Does anybody second?
I'll second that.
Motion to amend?
So Kathy, are you, are you voting right now? For?
Comment. Is it discussion time? Yeah, isn't, it's discussion time?
You, you can, yeah, you can make a comment now.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I was just wondering if um the city council would look at is wanting specific solid recommendations? Or if not knowing us, uh, giving them things where we really don't know the recommendation, yeah. That's a question for you guys.
Um, Kathy, I'm going to say my impression. My impression is that nobody in this group, um, unless I don't know about past histories, um, is an expert on policing, right? So the, I think the city council wanted to engage, and I believe the chief did as well, in thought partnership to have others who don't have that same background to have diversity of thought present to have these discussions. So these recommendations don't have to be um PhD level recommendations, where we've done, you know, a ton of research. It's as members of the community appointed to ATRAC, representing the community, here's what we would recommend. Does that help? And people, let me know if I, if you think I'm inaccurate, it's a nation.
That feels accurate to me.
Thanks, Stephanie.
And based on this with the 26, this is also a next step to the next step of leaning also on council and, and leadership on directions, um, and next steps for, or possibly us or not us.
So I have other discussion?
Um, just one more.
Okay.
Comment. Oh, Cameron first.
Okay.
Um, so I would motion, so I would motion to amend, uh, and right inner, uh, and recognizing the inherent danger police interaction poses to certain community members.
I did put that in the discussion in the back.
Okay, in that case, I'll withdraw.
And Cameron, there's also information data around that in the opening section, too.
Okay.
The likelihood of black people dying at the hands of police when they're stopped.
Okay. As long as that's recognized, I will withdraw. Then move to previous question.
Are we ready to vote?
Uh, I just want to, to second what Dory said in one of the city council meetings. One of the council members said that they would take the recommendations and do further study. So. Oh, I think that's good. Thank you, Dory, for reminding.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah.
Cameron, is your hand still up? Or is this?
Nope.
Got it. Cool. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Sounds like we need to finish. Did we finish the vote for the first one?
We haven't voted yet.
We were in discussion, right?
Are we ready? Any more discussion? All right. All in favor?
Folks use the, unless literally everyone's in favor, so if.
What?
If folks can please use the raise hand function.
Raise hand function.
Yeah.
I don't know where that is. I do not know where that is.
For now, I, I think I saw you raise your hand, Joy. So I'll just say yes, okay? So.
And I can't raise my hand right now, Paolo, because I'm sharing screen.
Uh, just hit Alt-Y.
Oh, Alt-Y, thank you.
It looks like everybody. Everybody, everybody raise their hand.
Opposed?
Anybody opposed? I think those were still left over, hands raised, so yeah, no, no oppositions.
Any abstention? Okay.
None.
That was the three. So I'll hand it back to Dory. That was the three.
So what it sounds like needs to happen next is Dory made some additions that, um, excuse me, that still need to be on there, because I believe, Dory, they're on your paper, but not here. And so I think maybe, would it be helpful also to see the notes that Joy was taking?
And yes, so I, I know, Paolo, we went back and forth in the chat, but I, I think I can save the chat for the ones that you added. And just don't hang up, Paolo. Get up, so I can save those notes. I do see two comments from Laurel, just about formatting on the screen. Can everybody see those right now?
It's a little small. Is there a zoom button or like a?
Make it way bigger.
If, if everyone's cool with it, then it's just me, then let's just, it's cool.
Make it way bigger.
I suggest we move this section up.
I suggest we move the section up and make it the top first recommendation. So the eight count wait. Recommendation or the policy, policies come first, those recommendations.
I heard my name. Sprinting in from the other room. Um, that was my only suggestion was let's move the policy to the top, just because that seemed like that had more of the. Um. Like punchy ones, I guess. Those seem bigger, but that's, and that's purely based on. Trying to capture some of the comments at the last meeting and between the last meeting.
And then the preamble from the September second meeting, that's in another section. Laurel was also suggesting just taking that out. So this stays as a clean one pager. I think that's what you were thinking.
Yes, exactly. Like, let's make this just pure. These are the recommendations and then all of the commentaries and addendum.
I just sent you the notes from right now.
Oh, did you just send me the notes?
Yes.
Email?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, just came through. Okay.
So I think for the next steps then, um, that I think it's going to be Dory, Joy and I working together to do that, but it looks like as it sits now, um, how this is. We, y'all adopt this and it's official how this document is. I don't know if you need to do an additional vote for all of it. It's, I don't think you do anymore. But it looks like it's good. And it's just going to be, yes, y'all adopt this after. After Dory makes the additions and then, uh, Joy will do some cleanup and then I'll figure out how I could support in between.
I'm happy to proofread.
And then I know that there are two people that I wanted. I'm glad they're here, Mercy and Spencer. If I can talk to you afterwards, if you look through the doc. You may have seen some places where I had questions and it'll take five minutes.
There's one other thing I was going to, I'm going to do, and I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this. Michael German is quoted a few times in here and so I am going to share with Michael German of. Are you okay with, you know, being your exact quote being referenced in here? I'm going to assume he's going to say yes. Uh, but if, let's say if he's not, I'll just pull his quotes, but then, you know. Uh, everything else will stay referencing that we did work with a outside source, meaning Michael German.
May I ask a process question?
Yeah.
Once we submit the report or present the report to council. Is that the end of it for our commission or do we then? Begin to lobby the commission, the city commissioners to enact our recommendations?
Yeah, um, that could, that could be, that's actually up to the commission when we, uh, in the future, maybe if we can in the February meeting. I'm hoping that we could do some of the, uh, regular beginning of the year stuff where y'all actually vote on what y'all want to do next. Now, I don't know that you would see, uh, uh, nothing that could happen to us. Council can make recommendations or can advise that maybe A track continues some of this work, but again, that'll be up to y'all.
Can I add that?
You, whether or not you're done with this, but yeah.
Um, I just wanted to add that, that the way you phrase that, I think it's, is really significant and I want to call attention to it. That part of our February meeting is determining our priorities for the year. And I think that I want us to have an opportunity at that point to say, and this is what we're going to do next. Because I, and part of that is like. I really meant it when I said it at the last meeting. I think some people are like not ready to be done with this and I think some people are really super duper ready to be done with this. And just from a like chair perspective, I want to see if there are people who are like, I'm not ready to be done with this. I want to keep doing it. If there's enough energy there, let's create this as a subcommittee. And I want to empower them like run with this and go.
Right. There are subcommittees and so you could, you know, I know that it was mentioned a lot last time that. A track have a focus on ADA accessibility or in general ADA, uh, accountability at the city. And so it might be that that's one subcommittee and there's another subcommittee to seeing post A track inquiry sessions, um, seeing some.
We may, I would make a prediction that we may also. Just depending on where the city is at in terms of, um, if they do go move forward with creating an advisory board or commission. I would suspect that we would get looped into that conversation again at that point too.
Yeah, and also on top of that, we, we're not seeing the council priorities yet, like we usually would. Dory, were you raising your hand? And you're on mute, so I'm not sure if you were talking earlier.
What happened to my sound?
It's working now.
You can go off screen share if you'd like.
Perfect. Thank you all. All right.
I can see all of you now.
Sorry.
You think that ends, was that okay? Good answer, your question? Yeah, cool. Were you mentioning something?
I need to go. Is there, um. Is there anything else that needs to?
Um, you know what? I just want to say something out loud. I really appreciated the way this meeting ran because it was calmer. People were, um, more in the right space. And so I have a wondering, I wonder if when big national events happen, we should just say. Let's not have discussions when folks' emotions are running high. So that's just.
I always think.
It's, it's rhetorical. I don't, I don't need a response now, but just something to think of. That's my learning. And, and I would suggest that folks check in with each other offline. Is that okay for me to say out loud, Paula? And so reach out if you need to check in with somebody because I'm feeling like I need some check-ins with folks. And so I might reach out to some of you as well.
Thank you, Dory.
Thanks, Dory. That I want, I'm really glad you said that. I was thinking too about like. I know that I hit the wall, um, before the last meeting was over. And so I want to encourage us to reconsider extending the time of meetings. Because I, I, I see where we were going with that, but like. We've worked so hard on this, let's get it finished. And instead. It caused me to realize like, I think those meetings are the length they are for a reason. So that is another thing I would have us ponder just moving forward.
And I'm hoping moving forward, we don't have national events like that anymore. Get my vote.
Right.
Don't do that anymore.
Thank you.
I'm just going to. It happens all the time, so we just have to build our resilience on how we deal with those events. So let's do it together.
Not like that.
Thank you all so much for the additional meeting and staying beyond, uh, the time also. I'm going to ask Dory and Joy, is it cool if y'all stay on for two more minutes?
Whenever you need.
Yeah.
I already did. So you're going to call us back or?
Mercy, can I call you Mercy and Spencer? That'll might be easier for us to just call back.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for letting.
So sorry to be late.
Oh, just good to have you, Kathy. Well.
Thanks. See you next month.
Thanks, everybody. See you soon.
So Dory, you're going to call?
Yeah, I'll give a call. It'll be in a while because I have a, a work call waiting for me right now.
No worries. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Spencer.
Hi. I'm just going to first stop. Uh, let me stop recording.